I'd also like to remind everyone to silence your cell phones and other devices so that we may conduct the people's business without interruption. Commissioner Nick Newkirk will give the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Goodness pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the gift of this day and for the opportunity to gather together in service to our community. We are grateful for the privilege to lead and the responsibility it carries. We ask you for your wisdom and guidance in every decision we make. Help us to lead with integrity, compassion, and humility. May our hearts and minds be aligned with the best for the people of Bullock County. Humble us as we serve and let all that we do bring honor to you. In your name we pray. Thank you.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Mincy White will call the roll of commissioners.
I, Venus Mincy White, President and Clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County, hereby call the roll for those on the governing body. All those present shall answer by saying aye. Chairman David Bennett.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Toby Connor.
Aye.
Commissioner Ray Mosley. Commissioner Anthony Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Nick Newkirk.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmy Rushing.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ray Davis.
Aye.
I've determined that we have six members of the Board of Commissioners present. Therefore, we have a quorum to conduct business for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. I now yield the floor back to the chairman.
Thank you. Before I entertain a motion to approve the general agenda, do we have any discussion or modification desired by the county manager or the board?
Mr. Chairman, we request to move the executive session to after public comments and before new business.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor? Got a unanimous decision? Okay. Public comments. At this time, I'll recognize those citizens who signed up to address the board, and since we do not have anybody that has signed up, we're just going to move on. I must now call for a motion to adjourn into executive session in accordance with the provisions of OCGA 50-14-21 and 50-14-3B1B and other applicable laws pursuant to the advice of County Manager Jeff Akins for the purpose of discussing potential litigation and the purchase of real estate. And we will have a decision afterwards. So we'll come back into regular session. Do I have a motion?
Motion, sir.
All in favor? Okay. This time we'll go into executive session.
Okay, we're back in regular session. And, uh, new business. First order here is going to be County Attorney Jeff Aikens, County Manager Randy Tillman, and Fire Chief Ben Tapley. This is to approve the sale and purchase agreement with R and R 529 LLC in the amount of $850,000 for the property located at 494 Elmer Phillips Road, Statesboro, Georgia.
You want me to start, Mr. Chairman? And then, uh, this is the property that the county needs to purchase for a fire station on Highway 67. And we have a, the sales contract that I submitted for the agenda has been slightly modified, um, and so I wanted to point that out. And we, we knew this, that the seller that we contracted with actually does not own the property at this time, but he has a contract to purchase it from the current owner. Uh, so we contracted with him to sell it to the county after his purchase is complete. We had a closing, or we have a closing date in our contract of April 24th, which is next Thursday. And he's a little concerned about whether, he thinks he can work it out, but he's a little concerned whether he can meet that date because of trying to close with the current owner. So he added a contingency, uh, under the special stipulations, that this contract is contingent on R and R 529 closing on said property prior to the closing, uh, this closing date of 4/24/25. And that's, that's the only difference between what was submitted and what I'm asking you to approve. And, uh, I also gave, Venus has a resolution that, to approve the contract, which I didn't submit, but I think we needed that to authorize who consigned what and, uh, just to authorize act, the actual acquisition of the property. So I would ask you, uh, if you're okay with it, just to approve that resolution as presented. And I don't know if Mr. Tillman or Mr. Tapley have anything to add, but...
No, just on the property, this, uh, and Chief Tapley can elaborate. This satisfies, uh, the, the current need for a fire station and also fits in the footprint almost perfectly for future expansions out into the county.
Yeah. Fire Chief Ben Tapley, uh, nothing much to add to that. You know, we were, when we first started talking about this, trying to get the perfect piece, um, we knew it had to be around Highway 67, uh, closer to Burkhalter, so we almost got that. So it's, uh, we're, we're proud of this piece of property and the future growth of maybe expanding in that area. So, thank you.
If you could, Chief, before you step away, could you just talk about how this will affect fire protection in the Five Mile District right now?
Right. Uh, you know, the way it's set up now, the, the current fire protection's run out of two stations in the city. One's, uh, on West Grady Street, the other one is on, uh, I forgot the address, but the city, Station Number Two, there, south of the hospital. So this, uh, this piece is the southern part of what we need. The northern part's going to be handled by the engine company that's at the EMS station. It's going to mirror that, that piece there along with staff and Engine Nine there in Cleto. Uh, and then that southern piece is this little piece of the puzzle. So then now we can mirror the response that they have coming out of the city will be in their Five Mile District, and then we can go back to Burkhalter, go west and east on Burkhalter and extend it out, uh, Highway 67 toward Josh Dill. And now, actually, you know, extend, I think you talked about it one time, extend actually out farther in those Class 10 areas that, uh, currently aren't covered. So, we're excited about this piece.
And then just to clarify, once this, uh, land is procured and you put a fire station there, that will allow you how many apparatus between those three stations?
Uh, we're, we're going to have an engine at each of on those apparat, uh, excuse me, at each of those stations. Uh, we're looking at moving the ladder truck, if we can put the tube base station at that Highway 67 location, moving the ladder truck from, uh, Station Three, possibly putting it there at, at that 67, uh, station as well. And, uh, yeah, be one engine apiece at each of those stations, uh, including Nine and Cleto, the one at EMS and the one there at Highway 67 and the, and the ladder truck.
And, and just to clarify, the city currently house, how, how many apparatus in their inventory?
Uh, they, they staff three engine companies and a ladder company.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or discussion on this? Okay. If not, I'm going to call for a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, you want a motion on the purchase?
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept the purchase of this piece of property.
Okay. All in favor? We've got a unanimous decision. Moving on to item number two. Again, this is going to be Attorney Jeff Aikens interim, or excuse me, County Manager Randy Tillman and Fire Chief Ben Tapley. Approve a resolution to approve a contract with Hawk Construction LLC and Smith Steel Structures for the construction of a fire station structure on the same piece of property.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, the contract amount is, uh, $175,965. And that normally, under Georgia law, uh, Public Works Law, requires procurement by sealed bid process or a sealed, um, request for proposal process. However, there are some exceptions to that, and one of them is, uh, when there's an emergency. The construction project is necessitated by an emergency, provided that the nature of the emergency shall be described in the minutes of the governing authority. And it defines the word emergency as any situation resulting in imminent danger to the public health or safety or the loss of an essential governmental service. And as this resolution recites, uh, the county may have to take over, um, the provision of fire suppression services in the Statesboro Fire District in its entirety, beginning July 1st. And if so, the county needs a fire station on this property in order to be able to provide that service to a portion of that, of that district. So, we're treating this as an emergency situation because, uh, the, the sealed bid process or sealed proposal process takes, you have to advertise for four weeks. Uh, and so obviously, if we had to do that, we would, there's no way we could meet the timeframe to have this in place by July 1st. So that's the basis for, um, using that exception in the Public Works Law. And I, you have a resolution before you, the contract is attached to it, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. I don't know if Mr. Tillman or Chief Tapley have any comments.
Again, we, uh, we were looking around, trying to find some people that could build something in a timely manner for us, and, uh, we contacted, uh, actually the, the contractor, subcontractor that worked on Register Station, there, uh, Station Three. He says he's not even in the business of, uh, erecting the steel buildings anymore. Can't find the help. Uh, we contacted another person, um, they have, only have a, a two-inch tubing type buildings, more like carports and stuff, which in some scenarios might work, but in this case, we didn't think so. So, talked to Hawk and then talked to him again in the presence of, uh, uh, the, Mr. Jeff, just, uh, and he says, hey, you know, with, uh, if this happens, then he can, he can get it done for us. So, we got to take him at his word that he can get it done for us.
By the way, I, I meant to point this out, but the, the General Assembly amended the Public Works Law this session to raise the threshold to 250,000. Unfortunately, that doesn't become effective until July 1st, so it doesn't help us in this situation. But if it were after July 1st, we, they wouldn't require, um, a public, I mean, a sealed bid or proposal for the, a project of this size.
And they say the, the building will be done by July 1st? Or what's the status of that? Because I know possibly this, um, land deal might take a little bit longer, so what's, are we on a timeline? Or have they told us, uh, a drop dead date on, we got to have it by this date, so we can have it done by July 1st?
Yeah, I don't believe they told us the drop dead date yesterday. Um, he said if, uh, if this is the timeline, and we only presented him, you know, the timeline we knew of today, that, uh, we could get the work, the, the, the site work done. They would come frame it out, put the concrete down, wait the, what'd he say, 28 days for it to cure, and then he'll, that'd give him time to order the steel and get it in here. As soon as it's ready, they'll, he'll throw it up. Um, the good thing about this, this is only the metal building to house our equipment, so there's no other work to do on the inside right now. It's just to house the, uh, the apparatus. Um, so all the living quarters, all that work will be done in, in the actual house, and we, that we can start that, you know, as soon as we get the, the piece of property.
So worst-case scenario, if the building doesn't get finished up till August, we're going to be fine?
Right.
Okay.
You can park the truck outside for a few days, correct?
Yes, I'm on, you know, yeah, I'm on, we actually, GFSTC, Georgia Fire Standards and Training Council called today for our annual audit. They're coming in May 28th, so I'm going to try to have them, uh, I'm going to go ahead and submit the documentation to get the EMS station and the, uh, this station inspected, so we can go ahead and get that certification, that compliance letter, and have all that done before July 1st. So, yes.
Who's doing the work on site? I'm assuming the county work, Public Works? I know they're backed up. Are they going to be able to get all that stuff done in a timely manner?
Yeah, the only thing we would have to have them to do is the initial site work. Uh, the contractor handles the concrete and everything above, so...
Yeah, and we, we do have a July 1 completion date, no later than July 1st. There's no liquidated damages, because we didn't really discuss that with him, but I don't think, I think that might have scared him off, if we wanted to put, you know, liquidated damages in there, but...
And then I just want to go on the record with one thing. Ms. King, can you tell us how we're funding all this?
This is going to come from, um, interest earned on SPOSS money.
Okay.
This, the purchase of the land and this building.
So this is not coming from general fund money?
No, this is coming from SPOSS and, yes, some sales tax money and interest earned on it. I'm actually, probably at the next meeting, I'm going to have a resolution for you to alloc, officially allocate that interest money and some of the, um, additional money that we received over the cost estimates, um, for SPOSS 2019, because we got a lot more money than we had initially estimated, so...
And then before we, before I ask for a motion on this, I just want to clarify too, that last week, the, the county's fire committee didn't meet with, uh, with representatives from the city to discuss the fire agreement again. And they came out of that meeting and, and they decided that they would have the two managers and the fire chiefs get together to discuss those issues some more. Uh, I believe they did discuss those things last week as well. Um, and there was not a whole lot of resolution with anything in that meeting, other than an agreement to continue to just talk. So, at this time, we still don't have a fire agreement, and we're, that's why we are moving forward now to ensure that the public is safe and that we can provide fire protection at the same level that they are receiving right now. And, um, just like Chief Tapley said, you know, we will have the same equipment, the same amount of equipment, uh, to be spread out through the county in those three, uh, locations between Cleto Road, Grady Street, and, and this fire station that we're going to construct. Um, and then, um, we are actually with the hiring staff, we are much further along schedule-wise than what we'd expected to be. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Uh, we actually had, uh, Monday, we had nine new firefighter recruits start, and as of last time I checked, we still had nine, so that's always good. Uh, on 4/28, we have, uh, five lateral firefighters, so five firefighters that are already certified, that just come in and do lateral, uh, two weeks and then come onboard, two drivers that are coming through, so seven total. And then, uh, May 12th, we'll actually have two, two captains from the outside, four lieutenants that's already certified, they'll, they'll be coming onboard. Uh, so that's a total of 14, 16, 22 people now that we've hired from the outside, uh, coming in.
37 that we were shooting for, wasn't 37 the number?
Thirty, 37 is what y'all approved. Uh, some, you know, obviously we have some promotions in there, so, um, we have, uh, 37. The fire training captain was an internal promotion, so then we got a backfield of that lieutenant's position. Uh, I already have, I actually sent that email yesterday, we got to set up another round of interviews, because I got two more lieutenants that have applied, two more FAOs and seven firefighters. So I got to do some more interviews next week, uh, to keep on, keep filling positions. So, we are, we're very pleased to have some, I sent an email out of the ones we brought in, the, just the lieutenants and the captains, over 100 years of firefighting experience between those, so that's a, that's a, um, a huge deal, because anytime you can bring that type of experience into your department, it's, it's only going to help.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do we have any other discussion on this? Any other questions?
Mr. Tapley? Is automatic aid versus requested aid, that's still on the table to be resolved, correct?
You want to?
Yes, sir. It's still on the table. Uh, as Chairman referenced, I, I did meet on the 11th, uh, myself and Chief Tapley with Mr. Penny and Chief Grams. Um, we, we did talk about automatic aid again, and as Chairman said, also, there was no change on, uh, the city's status of that at this time.
But it expired July 1st?
That's correct.
I did send them a, uh, I actually emailed Chief Grams on the 14th, a mutual aid agreement, same one that I've worked with, uh, Mr. Aikens, to send to the other cities and counties around us. Uh, just changed it to Bullock County and City of Statesboro. I actually sent it to the wrong email address, so I texted him today, got his right email, and have resubmitted that to him, said, please push this up, that you're chain of command, because, uh, it's, it's important to me, because, I'm at, even though the city says, you know, we'll call, you know, y'all call, we'll come, you call, we'll come, it's better just to have it, you know, a piece of paper and writing in effect on July 1st. So, I sent that to them, uh, again today, so...
I, I would also like to say that the meeting we had on the 11th was, uh, very professional, uh, very courteous, very friendly, and, uh, want to pass along that we appreciate their time and, uh, still open any discussions that they wish to have. Thank you. Any other questions at this time? If not, I'm going to call for a motion on this.
So move us, Chair.
Okay.
Right.
All in favor? We have a unanimous decision. Okay? I believe that concludes our, uh, new business. Moving on to commission and staff comments. Any comments from the staff?
Yes, uh, Ms. King would like to discuss the possibility of a budget workshop date?
Yes, I feel that we probably need to have another budget work session and discuss. Now we can put some numbers, so that we can, um, make some decisions about what, what we want to pay for or not. Um, it's still early yet to know on revenues, but we can look at, um, the cost numbers and see what's out there and kind of get your feelings on how you want to move forward with the budget. So I was, we have two more weeks before the next regular meeting, so I was thinking, uh, maybe next week, maybe the 24th, if that would work. Or, I'm, I can be flexible, so I don't know what would be a good day for all of you, and if you'd prefer mid, middle of the day or evening.
So just to clarify, the 24th is next Thursday?
That's a Thursday.
The ACCG meeting is, is starting off on Thursday to Sunday?
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, we can't do that.
Okay.
We'd have to be like the Tuesday, Wednesday before either the following week.
What about, uh, the afternoon of the 23rd? Will that work for everybody?
That's that Wednesday.
Just like trying to plan a birthday party.
I'd like to be there, do it.
This time of year, it ain't no place good.
No.
That's right.
Okay.
Um...
Would the beginning of the next week be better?
Okay. How about the 29th?
The 29th could be maybe earlier in the day. There's, that's the... The 29th could be maybe earlier in the day, there's, that's the evening, that evening is the employee appreciation dinner. So it would have to be earlier in the day, if we do that.
It'd be in the morning.
Okay, so how about the 29th? I know these gentlemen, some of them would prefer to get in here and get out sooner versus later.
Okay.
8:30, will that work?
8:30.
Let's, let's go for 8:30.
That works for me, okay.
Okay. So the 29th at 8:30?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments there, Mr. Tillman?
Uh, yes, sir. Would like to give a very quick update on a meeting that was held for the GSP program. It'll take just a few minutes.
Sure. Ron Nelson, Engineering Chairman, Commissioners. So real brief update, thank you, Mr. Tillman. Groundwater Sustainability Program, just as a quick reminder, just want to make sure we get this set out front, the 1-888-353-8020 hotline for residents in the, the call area, the affected area can call in and leave a message, it'll transcribe, and we'll get an email, we'll be able to respond to that. That'll go to the Bryan County Groundwater Sustainability Program Manager, and then also the Bullock County as well. The program website, bryonbullockgsp.org is also live, so folks can go to that, that website to get more information on our program. We currently working through a request for proposal as a requirement to bring on well drillers, and we did, over the last few weeks, we started refining that completely, and we look forward to being able to go to public advertisement a week from today, next Thursday, on April the 24th, to have that public advertisement sent out. Also, just an update on our interactions with trying to provide letters to the affected folks in the, the affected area. Bullock County pleased to announce that we had 1,039 total parcels, that we've gotten 100% of those letters sent out in Bullock County. We did have 27 come back as being undeliverable, so we're working through that, and we did have 76 responses that would move through and register their wells willingly. And we've also had 25 calls in Bullock County that have come on to our 888 hotline, so we've been able to respond to those as well. Like to also mention that we did have a, the GSP Advisory Committee, the first meeting and a public workshop was held this past Monday on the 14th of April. The committee meeting was held between 3:30 and 4:30 PM in Bryan County at the Board of Education on US 280 in the Black Creek, Ellebel area. I believe we had good interaction there at the committee meeting, and then we had approximately 45 folks that attended the workshop that was also livestreamed on both Bullock County and Bryan County social media sites. And also like to mention that nine people registered their wells during the course of the workshop. So, that's the current update we have at this point in time. Any questions or anything?
So, if, we have folks that live down there in the Five Mile, we love some Five Mile radiuses around here, but i-if there are folks that have a well down there that they want to register and they don't have all the information, what are you recommending that they do?
Call that 1-888 number, or go to the, the website and actually just leave their name on the 888 number, or go to the website, get some information, but you can also call the 888 number, that's really the best way to interact with us. That transcription of their message goes straight to our email, and we can handle that very quickly.
But the bottom line is, they can register their well just based off of the, the location of the well, even if they don't know the depth or how big the pipe is?
Oh, absolutely, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And if they get that information later, they can always go back and amend it.
The initial is what matters, that's correct. That's right.
So really, we just want folks to register their wells, and if they don't have all the information, that's okay?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And just to let some of them know that if they don't know what kind of well they got, if they'll go out there to their well box, it'll tell them what horse well. Now, they won't tell them, it won't tell them how deep or anything like that. Of course, they'll know whether it's iron casing or PVC casing. If they want to, if they want to fill that in, they can find that out, just walk out in their yard and find that out.
Yes, sir. Good point. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
I have one more item. I realize this is late in the week, it was an oversight on my part, I apologize to the following people. But this week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, our 911 dispatchers and other dispatchers around the, including the city. So this National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, we proudly honor the dedicated 911 dispatchers of Bullock County. Their calm voices in chaos, quick thinking, and tireless commitment behind the scenes are the lifeline of our community and first responders. I want to thank them for their unwavering service and their vital role they play in keeping Bullock County safe. So we have had some special events for them to, this week. Want to thank Chief Tapley and Bryan for, I believe they played chef on a couple of days and pitched in for that, and, and there's been others that have dropped food off, and I just want to appreciate, appreciate them and those that support them. It's a, it's a very, very tough job. It's, you never know what's going to be on that line when it's answered, and they, they have to deal with it, and they do it very professionally. If you have not been out there, I urge you to go out and visit, stop in any time, they are open 24/7. So, thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate everything they do, not just for, for Bullock County, but for, for Evans and Kandler County as well, too. Okay, any Commissioner comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say a few things. One is for you, a lot of folks don't know, but I talked to the Chairman earlier, and he's had most of his day tied up, and got real aggressive on the part of the pumping thing with the safety tanks in Bullock County. I think that they, they getting that together, my hat's off you for that, a new position that he's in, they keeping him pretty busy with a full-time job. The main ones is Randy Tillman and Ben Tapley, Bryan, most everybody that's sitting here, I appreciate what y'all doing, y'all are in some unterritory, uncharted territories, y'all go doing some of the things that you do, but you're doing it very well, as far as I'm concerned, getting our fire department to move forward, and Randy to keep the county going, and especially Ms. Christie King. She is, she is fighting a bear right by herself, that she usually had, you know, people that had been around a long time, and so there's a lot on Ms. King at this point in time that people don't understand, she stays in that office to herself over there, and if she don't speak to you, that's because she's mean, it's just because she's got too much to do and ain't got time to be aggravated with you. But Ms. King, I do appreciate, I appreciate what you're doing, and we thank a lot of you. Thank you.
I'll just echo those sentiments, that we as Commissioners do recognize that there are a lot of people that are wearing multiple hats right now, and we appreciate what you're doing, we recognize it, and we thank you for it. This community thanks you as well. And we appreciate the fact that you are dedicated enough in your job that you're willing to step up and, and take on those additional responsibilities in this time right now. You know, there's a lot of people that, and I've heard the, the rumors myself, and I've had people ask me about it, that, you know, oh, that, that people are leaving for this reason or that reason. Bottom line is, people have chose to move on, and we're never going to fault anybody for bettering themselves. And we look forward to, to continued relationships with those people. We, we don't just consider them employees, we consider them friends as well, too. And, you know, we're just, we're, we're in a period of transition, and I tell people here that we went a long time in this county where we thinks, we had the same people here, and when you start looking around at the average times that some of those people play, like a county manager, you're looking at a job where somebody comes in and usually stays for four or five years, and then they move on, just like a high school football coach would do. So, you know, this, this period is, is probably, it's not comfortable for anyone, it's putting a lot of added strain on folks, and we recognize that, and we appreciate it. But we're going to continue to push through with this, and I truly believe, and I believe I, the, the other Commissioners believe this as well, that we're going to come out on the, the back end of this better because of it. So, we appreciate what you do. And Christie, I've already told you that in the budget season, dinner's on me. So, okay, well, I believe that's everything, unless we have any other Commissioner comments here? Okay? If not, I think that concludes all our business for the evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman?
All in favor? Okay, this concludes our meeting for this evening, thank y'all.